All right, we will call this meeting to order at 6:34 PM on August 9th, 2021. Good evening and welcome to the Concord Select Board meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the Minuteman Media Network. The Concord Select Board will be meeting live and over soon for the next several months in accordance with Masst Open Meeting Law. We may from time to time have select board members join the meeting virtually, and we encourage members of the public to continue to access our meetings in person. Thank you for all of you who are attending and by Zoom, thank you for the Zoom participants. Both locations will be on all our meeting agendas, and I ask you now if you are here in person to please switch your phone to the silent mode, which I forgot to do too. One second here. Okay, all right, the first item is our consent agenda.
So the consent agenda, the town accountant's warrants of August 5th, 2021, two one-day special liquor licenses, one for Salem Five Bank on October 12th, and the other for Belmont Hill School on September 27th. And then Sunday entertainment licenses for the Concord players with a variety of performances, six performances and the Performing Arts Center performance of August 15th. And then notably a gift acceptance from James Terry and Judith Terry, a gift of $55,000 to the Police Department Sustainable Vehicles Account for the purchase of a Tesla Model Y to be used as a patrol vehicle. And also $5,000 from James Terry and Judith Terry is a gift to the Community Services Support Account to create a gift fund to assist Concord residents under the age of 60 that are not otherwise covered by other support organizations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for the gift, wonderful. Okay, do we have a motion and second?
That's second.
That was the motion, all right, second question, Linda.
So, and I'm assuming that we're approving the consent agenda based on all the times as listed on the agenda?
On the agenda, yes. We normally don't recite every single thing, correct?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, next we have the Town Manager's Report, and the Town Manager has been on a well-deserved vacation, and we don't have a written report this week, but possibly board members have questions. I have one question about it.
I have a couple of quick updates.
Great, great.
So first, I'll start off with COVID, unfortunately, once again. It's been a while since we've had to lead off with COVID news, but you know, the Delta variant and the case and the case numbers growing nationally are of concern. We are monitoring our case numbers locally, and we haven't seen, I don't think, the same kind of rate of increase, but we have seen a few more cases than we did, you know, in the earlier part of the summer. And so Health Director Susan Rask, Fire Chief Tom Judge, and other members of our Emergency Operations Committee that was formed for COVID, have gotten together a couple of times to kind of keep track of things and see where they are. The guidance that's coming out on masks is, you know, different at the federal level than it is at the state level. So we're trying to, I guess, I don't want to say wait and see what happens on that, but that is really what we're trying to do. We have pretty high vaccination rates in Concord, which really mitigates a lot of the risk. And so we don't want to overreact to national data locally, but we are watching it and we are watching for trends. And if we decide that we need to go back to some kind of mask mandate or if the guidance from the state changes, we will certainly advise the board of that, but we are, we're watching carefully. A couple of quick items on Townhouse, I know we, I think I mentioned it in a report two weeks ago, but I think we should be fully back in middle of next week. I think there are just a few things to work out. There are actually a few offices that are back in there now, kind of soft opening.
The doors came in.
The doors came in, yes, yeah, it looks really nice, and we're gonna have, we'll have to have some kind of event.
Ribbon cutting.
Ribbon cutting, rededication or something like that, it looks great, I can't wait for everybody to see it. And so we'll have more offices moving in next week. And so by the, and then the other thing is, Carrie is here, the Clerk's Office really relies on a piece of equipment from the state to be able to be in that office, and that's one of the things that's sort of out of our hands that we're waiting on, which would impact the clerks moving back into the Townhouse. But I think by the middle, it's scheduled for the middle of next week. So by the end of next week, we'll be able to give out a firm schedule and say, here's when everybody's back. Really, the biggest thing left to do is do a pretty thorough cleaning of it, because it was, it did get a little messy during the construction, so it needs to be walls cleaned and the whole thing.
So Stephen, do you anticipate that we'll be having select board meetings? I guess not next Monday, but starting in September?
I would hope so.
Over there, and would they be in the small hearing room, or are we able to have them in that bigger room? Or we don't know yet?
Don't know yet, there's the, the hearing room, the town hearing room was used, like the select board meeting was used as storage for a lot of the stuff downstairs, and they've been moving all that out. Some of the, some of the stuff isn't going back to where it was. And so we'll have some disposition of surplus property, we'll have to go through, we'll have to get it out of there. And then the hearing room is also used as some staging for furniture and things like that. So there, as a part of the cleanup, well, there are sense, we have a goal is to have us back in there, you know, certainly by the end of this month, fully operational by the end of this month, and then be able to have meetings starting in September, we're close.
Right.
So then a couple of other things, quick items. One is the, there's a pre-construction meeting on Subera, or maybe it even happened today. So that project will be getting underway very soon. We also have an update on, on White Pond, which was positive. Delia Kay from our Lands Division received a grant for some water quality assessment work. So she's working with a contractor or a contractor consultant on that.
Is that testing, Stephen?
It's testing, yeah, it's testing, but the, they are also, Susan and Kay are still monitoring the algae bloom thing, that seems to, they have a system set up, and they, it seems to be working pretty well, so that's been a positive outcome there too. And then another thing is, there's a, there was a tennis tournament, a pretty significant tennis tournament at the Thorough Club, was it this past weekend, Jeremy?
I believe so.
Yeah, and I only mention it because it was, it was a big event for the Thorough Club, but the planning for the permitting that was required got a very, very late start. I just wanted to commend Jeremy, the Health Department, and the DPLM staff, Building Department, Health Department, and a number of others that really went into overdrive to make sure that they had the work needed to get their permits to have their events. So it was, we were able to work with them and get that done, so hopefully everybody had a fun time there. And I think, and again, I apologize for the brevity of the report, I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I just have a question, Stephen, I kind of brought this up offline a couple of weeks ago, but you were gonna give us an update on legal expenses, and so hopefully.
I think that's on the agenda for next week.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah.
Right, thank you, Susan, we've decided to make a whole agenda item out of it, so we can talk for, you know, a few minutes about it. Okay, great.
And me will be here next week.
Okay, great.
Actually, I should, going back to the, we are also talking to schools about COVID, but I also reminded me that the Thorough School is still under repair as well. So people will see a large tent outside of the Thorough School that will be, I believe, their temporary cafeteria, because their cafeteria inside is being used as classroom space. I think they have, there were eight classrooms impacted, some superficially, others down to the studs. And there's also roof repairs that are needed, so you'll be seeing some activity over there, but they expect to be able to have the kids back for the opening day.
Okay.
I got a notice today that a resident at Newbury Court tested positive for COVID, and they're fully vaccinated, so it just, I think it continues to illustrate how, even in spite of vaccination status, that transmission is still feasible. And so I don't know that in September we'll necessarily be able to meet in person, I hope so.
Right, okay, right, and we'll just keep an eye on it, and anyone can choose to participate via Zoom. So as far as we know, next week, anyway, we are live again here in this building. Okay, Chair's remarks, I only have two brief remarks. As I just said, we'll be meeting next week, August 16th, for a regular meeting, not a focused meeting. We have a lot of regular business going on, and we're going to be able though to have a break and cancel the August 23rd and not meet on the 30th. So we're having a good break until September 7th, Tuesday after Labor Day, which will be our next meeting after that. We will be having a focus meeting September 20th to discuss and brainstorm alternate funding for the middle school. And my other announcement is, I neglected to announce last week, the Attorney General ruled that the Transportation Advisory Committee is a public body subject to the open meeting law. So in light of that, we're looking at reconsidering the membership and the charge, and this will be discussed at a future Select Board meeting, possibly or probably a focus meeting that we're going to be having on transportation, maybe in October, November, around then.
Just make one comment.
Sure.
I read the decision of the Attorney General, and the problem with the Transportation Committee was that it did not give proper notices and did not keep minutes. There was nothing in that decision that said anything about
Correct.
the member changing the membership of the committee.
That is correct.
And so if there's a change in the composition and membership of that committee, that has nothing to do with the open meeting law or the Attorney General's opinion.
Right, Stephen, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I think because the, first of all, that we will have a Transportation Advisory Committee meeting, I think, next week to review the determination and approve of minutes for the September 2020 meeting that was cited in the letter. And so there are, because we wanted to have this kind of combination of town staff and town residents working together on transportation issues in a more detailed way than you normally would have, there's a possibility that a town staff are meeting to talk about non-transportation advisory committee, you know, agenda items. There could be an issue with an incident, an accidental OML violation, so we want to avoid that. And so we probably want to look to replace the town, the town staff will still attend meetings and still advise the committee and do all that stuff. It just was, we were, we were trying to do it in a different way that I honestly think was working very well. But, you know, to avoid, you know, like I said, inadvertent open meeting law violations, I would recommend we, we change the composition so town staff aren't in that position.
Right, so we'll, we'll be discussing that at a future meeting, right. Okay, so our next item is the Colonial Inn. We have a license violation to discuss. Is anyone here from the Colonial Inn tonight?
I hope so.
Okay, oh, Henry?
Because I was, was engaged to procure the, all of the licenses for the new owners of the Colonial Inn in 2015. I think it's not appropriate for me to sit on this, on this matter, not because I don't think I can be objective about it, but because there might be a perception of bias on my part one way or the other, and so I, I would like to excuse myself for this hearing, then I will sit outside and I will return when you're finished.
All right, thank you, Henry. Okay, so we have here Chief O'Connor and Mr. Glick from Colonial Inn. Chief, do you want to start? Thank you for coming tonight.
A good evening, Joseph Hoconer, Chief of Police here at Town of Concord. With me tonight is Detective Keith Harrington, who performs licensing duties for the Police Department. Contained within your packet tonight were documents, memos, which I sent to the board in your role as the alcohol licensing, local licensing authority, as well as some redacted police reports that stated on June 16th this, this year, there was violations at the Colonial Inn, resulted in a person who was transported to the hospital. Another person who we believe was under the influence of alcohol was also there. I'm giving you a quick summary, because I believe you probably reviewed the documents. I have recommended a one-day suspension of, of the license due to the seriousness of the event, emergency vehicles traveling through the town to get to this person to render, render aid and then transport the person to the hospital, also in an emergency manner, sets public safety issue within, within the town for our citizens, as well as the first responders who responded there. I would say that the Colonial Inn is very cooperative with our investigator as we look at, look into this matter, and there have been no other incidents that we've had at the Colonial Inn, and they've always generally been very cooperative with us.
Thank you, so there have been no incidents in the past three years, is that correct?
I don't worry of any of the previous incidents.
Okay, thank you. Do board members have questions for the Chief or for Mr. Glick or Detective Harrington? Matt?
Yeah, I think the question I'd have, just given the circumstances, is about the training of staff and whether there, you would recommend in addition to the, the license suspension, temporary license suspension, any, any kind of, you know, additional training or renewal of training? You know, I just think, it, I assume the tips training would tell you to do otherwise than, than what the staff did that evening.
Right, and Detective Harrington has a conversations with Mr. Glick, and I'm under the impression that they've reviewed with their staff what the appropriate actions they're supposed to take. I would recommend that, you know, staff also, you know, take an additional course of tips in person. Is our preference, they can do that stuff online now, you know, with, with COVID, but, you know, we feel in person is always, always a valuable way to go. Should the board decide to issue a suspension, the Colonial Inn does have the ability to appeal to the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission to have a fine in lieu of a suspension, but that would be up to the, the management of the Inn.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, other questions from board members?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, so you're recommending that we not do what's in the statute about first offense is a, first offense, but because of the seriousness of this particular offense with the involvement of so many emergency personnel, that it was, it was more than just a?
In, in the town's go, go laws and regulations allows you to step beyond that, that first warning phase and retraining. They said, I believe this incident and the, and the facts that are contained in the report with the person being passed out at the bar, having vomited on, on themselves, that this was a more, more serious incident. And I, and I can't understate the, the facts of emergency responders, particularly the fire department moving heavy apparatus through our downtown area to respond to emergency does create a significant public safety concern.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions for Mr. Glick. So I think that I read that you have a pool of servers that share the tables together.
Correct.
Okay.
At that time, that, that has changed at the current stage. At, at that time, yes, due to COVID and staffing levels that we continue to have, our servers were pooling as one group on that particular day. That's no longer occurring, now they have their own stations that, that's four tables or five tables of their own floor table stations.
Okay, I guess that would make it easier to keep track, to make sure no one's over served if, if you have your own station.
For certain.
Right, okay, that's good, am I?
I think Stephen as well.
Sure, sure.
And Colonial Inn really, you know, takes alcohol service seriously. You know, we were a small inn representing the Town of Concord. You know, we don't feel ourselves to be a nightclub. I've been there only one year at the end, and it's a COVID year, you know, so obviously our operations are different than they used to be. You know, our tavern really is open as a restaurant, not as a bar, there's no live entertainment. But myself and the staff really, you know, were upset that this incident did occur. You know, we believed that at the time, I was there that evening, I wasn't involved with the serving of the guest, but when we called emergency services, you know, we believed there was actually a medical emergency. And we didn't realize that was, that the guest was intoxicated. I clearly understand upon, you know, witnessing what occurred that night, that he was, and understand that clearly, you know, we were in the wrong in, you know, getting that guest, you know, to that situation. So we apologize that that occurred. We have done retraining with our staff, and not all retaken tips, which we will do with our staff. But we certainly have advised our staff of this particular incident and the stain that we brought upon, you know, our inn in doing this, and point out points that could have been done differently to avoid this from happening. So, you know, we are serious about not letting this happen again at Colonial Inn.
That's very good to hear, so that kind of goes to my question. When I read the reports, it looks like the bartender said, at first, this gentleman's speech appeared clear and lucid, no sign of intoxication, and then he had one or two sips of wine, and suddenly he was passed out. Is there any explanation how, why, how that happened?
I, I don't, I didn't interact with the guest until, you know, after the guest had passed out, so I can't, you know, render an opinion as to how he was seeming coherent initially.
Right.
But they had had dinner with us and consumed, you know, wine prior to the bartender serving them a glass of wine.
Right.
So in hindsight, knowing that the server did serve them two bottles of wine, and then got another glass of wine, you know, when he's by himself at the bar, that would be my supposition.
Right, and are those in two different rooms then? The dinners in one room?
Well, they had dinner on the patio.
Right.
And then this was a hotel guest, you know, the guest that needed medical assistance is a hotel guest. He's, he's a regular, he's come the past 30 weeks and spent, spends the night, you know, joins a friend. So his guest had left the evening, and then the guest went to the hotel bar. It had just opened up earlier that week, you know, prior to that week, the bar had not been open for service, you know, the rules changing. So he sat at the taproom bar, ordered a glass of wine, so it was in a different location.
So that's my question, how would the bartender know if he's in one room that this guest had two bottles of wine in another room?
In the past, we didn't have a procedure for that, you know, now, since this incident occurred, we have put a procedure in place that says if a dining guest or hotel guest goes from one area to another area, that we give a heads up saying, this guest has joined us from there.
Very good.
And it might be one glass of wine, and we gladly serve him a second glass of wine.
Sure.
And in this case, that was not the case.
Okay, great, thank you.
Are there any more questions from the board? I'll just comment that I appreciate your comments about taking this seriously. I think the town takes this issue very seriously, and we appreciate the public safety response, and so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we're ready for a motion?
Yes, so I move to impose a one-day suspension of the liquor license for the Colonial Inn in response to a violation on June 16th, 2021.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
You know, the specific date and terms, I think.
All right, well, that's right, I think Detective Harrington recommended that it happened on the same day of the week, which was Wednesday, is that correct?
That is in accordance with that 86.
Right.
Yeah, so I think that we don't have to include that in our motion necessarily, it would be, that's just standard procedure, yeah.
All right.
And I think that, that will work.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Chief, Detective Harrington, Mr. Glick. Thank you all for coming tonight. Okay, our next item is, oh, we need to, Carlin, could you just let Henry know? It's just shorter that way than the table. So our next item will be confirm the town calendar. As you know, we voted a May 1st annual town meeting on a Sunday, May 1st, 2022, and we now have a draft calendar to take a look at. I think it's an excellent job, there's one date that I'm going to propose we discuss. Let me see if other board members first have any other comments about that.
Yeah, I was just curious how the special town meeting and the town-wide vote that's expected for the middle school would fit into this.
It would have its own calendar.
Yeah, but I mean, I guess we, it, it, we still need to coordinate it with this, right?
But we don't know yet. I think once the middle school building committee and the school committee decide if they want the special town meeting to be in December or January or whenever, then we can add all those dates. For example, there's, we have to have a warrant, you know, and
Open and close.
Right, we have to have all of those things, so it's going to have its own mini calendar.
Yeah, I was just looking at some of these dates, and it just seems a little bit crowded, you know, in that time. So, I mean, I think the expectation is that the special town meeting would be in December, and then that the vote would be in sometime in January. It's, I, I think that that's what I assumed. Stephen, you must have an idea.
Well, I think they're, they're, it's been a bit of a moving target, as you know.
Of course, it's all subject to the
We've lost some time in terms of getting through schematic design.
Yeah.
And so I was talking to Superintendent this morning about this, I think she wants to get with the co-chairs of the committee to start to frame out a calendar that we could present, that they could present to the committee for consideration.
Because I think if, if it gets pushed all that much further, it starts to make sense to just roll it into town meeting.
Right, okay. All right, Linda?
So I thought in general this looked good, I did have a couple of questions. I assume that the town moderator and the town manager's office and the clerk's office have had a chance to look at this?
Yes.
Okay, and so the, the two things here.
They actually wrote it. The three of them.
We have the moderator there on Zoom.
I was just, I had one question about the, the timing between in April, just before the town meeting materials are sent to the printer, that seemed awfully close between the deadline for submission for town meeting materials and when it went to the printer. But if Chris has looked at this.
So it's six-day turnaround?
Yeah, that's, it's really tight, given
To get it printed.
what's happened in the past.
Carmen, do you have some other comments about this or anything else about the calendar?
Sure, I, I think on, on Linda's point about the town meeting materials, we won't have quite as robust a set of town meeting materials this time around as we have in the last two annual town meetings, because we will be returning to having audiovisual presentations on the articles. So it won't be necessary for people to draft a narrative and include that in the town meeting materials. I think that, in essence, the town meeting materials are going to consist of what would in pre-COVID times have been the handouts that would have been on the table. So it will be the motions, any particular handouts that any committee wishes to create, or any group of citizens wishes to create on a particular article. And that's really about it, so that it should be a much less substantial document than it has been in the last two cycles. And I, I see Chris is there, and Chris and I have talked about this in this, this. Chris, am I correct that this is a comfortable turnaround time for you?
It is, yeah, the printer we've been working with over the past few years, we've got a great relationship with, and as long as we can stick to these hard deadlines, it shouldn't be a problem.
I was just trying to look out for you, Chris.
Thank you, Linda.
The other thing I would note is that the, the date for the warrant opening is January 15th, and the warrant closing is February 2nd. I, I think this is an idea that has come primarily from the town manager's office, and it's fine, but you just need to be thoughtful. Thoughtful and cognizant about making this change to what our historic procedure has been. For many, 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 many years, the warrant has been open for thirty days. And as I've mentioned previously, I think the only real impact that the shortened time has will be on citizen petitioners. Because anyone within town government is going to understand when the town meeting deadlines are. And it's not going to impact their schedules. They will focus on when the warrant is closing rather than when it is opening. But it would be citizen petitioners who would be pinched by this, so. So it's fine. I would also note that January fifteenth, I think, is a holiday. So it might not be the ideal day for the town meeting preview meeting. You might wish to slide that a week earlier and if you did that, that would both. Be a modify, lesser modification of the time period that the warrant is open. And also take that day off of a, of a holiday weekend, so that's about.
Right, thank you for mentioning that, Carmen. I saw your email about that and I was going to mention that as well. Martin Luther King Day is January seventeenth, so it's a holiday weekend. But also that thirty day period has been a tradition. So one possibility is that we could adopt this whole calendar, except for moving that first date, January fifteenth. Up one week earlier to January eighth. So that's one possibility.
There's no benefit in keeping that period shorter. I mean, and it costs nothing to keep the warrant open.
Right.
The amount of, I mean, you could keep it open from December fifteenth to December first if we wanted to. And there's no, there's no downside to that. Unless what you want to discourage people from coming forward with petitions.
Okay.
I, I had another point, which is that April eighteenth is Patriots' Day. And that is the deadline for sending out the finance committee report. And so that means that effectively, the date for sending that out is the previous.
The previous Friday.
Or Saturday.
Right.
I mean, Friday, because people are probably not going to work and be working on Saturday. So, so that means there are fewer days than indicated effectively, right?
Correct.
I don't know if that matters, but just noting it.
Right. And Linda, did you have another question?
Well, I like the idea of January eighth in the date. And the other comment I was going to make had to do with down below holidays and events relative to the schedule. It lists Indigenous Peoples' Day. Which is now a state holiday, I understand, but Columbus State, the school department is going slash Columbus State.
Correct.
Because the state has not.
That's right, thank you.
Our local bylaws still refers to it as Columbus Day as well, that's a.
So, so Linda's right, it should say Indigenous Peoples' Day slash Columbus State. Okay, and also, thank you, Linda, we got a comment from a citizen to add two other holidays. Jeremy, I think you got that, two other holidays that were requested that are added in the holiday section.
So we hadn't embedded those, that would be up to the board's discretion.
We can list as many holidays as we want, it doesn't affect the calendar.
So the, I, I saw that correspondence. While I respect individual people's traditions, by listing some traditions and not. There's other traditions that could also be on here that aren't on here, so. I think we should think a little bit about that before just jumping in and doing it.
Hard to know which ones to list and which ones not to, right? So you're saying right now it only shows formal legal holidays? Is that right?
And there are some.
Yeah, there's some others that are traditions, so hard to know where to put the line then on that.
Exactly.
Okay. Other comments, questions for Carmen or Chris?
I, I like the January eighth suggestion too for. Warrant opening or town meeting preview meeting.
All right. Are we ready for a motion then, I guess?
Okay, move to approve the calendar events leading up to the twenty twenty two. Annual town meeting is included in the meeting materials with the following amendment. Reschedule the town meeting preview meeting and the warrant opening date to January eighth at nine AM.
Second. Okay, there's a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, great, so Jeremy, if you could post that calendar on the website, that would be wonderful. I know a lot of people are eager to get the calendar and get their business going, so that's great. And thank you for your help, Carmen, Chris, Kari, and everyone else who worked on it. Now we will turn to the next item, which is the DEI Commission Charge. And we have several people with us today live and Jeremy, how many people do we have on Zoom?
We have thirty one respondents total.
Okay. So this topic wins the award so far of the year of having the most participants, two weeks in a row. So let's begin with the conversation just with the board. We have here several letters and a draft, some ideas for a draft charge from the League of Women Voters. Who would like to begin? Every select board member was supposed to be thinking about this and. Let's see where we're all at.
It was suggested to me. By a citizen that the membership, it would be good if the membership could include someone from CCHS. Who was on the racial. The high school, because they did a lot of hard work. And I, I think generally that my comment would be that we should draw on people who have experience in this. As well as people who are un, underrepresented.
Okay.
But I think there's expertise as evidenced by the letters we received.
Okay. So Susan, do you know what, who was on that committee? Was, were there students, teachers, citizens?
The person that suggested it to me said it was students, she said it was a student committee. And there were, they did a lot of work and they did some really, some really good work. And it would be helpful for us to have one of those representatives on this committee.
And that's another type of diversity that is lacking in a lot of our committees anyway, age, yes, that's a good idea, okay. Other ideas?
I just had a question about the mission, which is, you know, as stated, the mission is about. Enhancing, increasing cooperation, understanding and dialogue, and then to promote inclusion. But it doesn't really have a sort of a concrete goal to increase the diversity of the population of the town. And I just wonder, you know, do we want to be more concrete? Are we, is that a mission that we would seek that this would lead to? Or is it really the more just create the, the social environment? In which that might be more encouraged to occur.
So as I, I think that's a good question, you know, as I read the good work that had already been done. On the material that was given to us by the league and representing community input. I think the social aspect was emphasized, but there was one section in there that spoke to. Bringing recommendations with issues in the community as well as for municipal government. To our attention.
Because, I mean, when I think of this, I think of town, the town government's hiring practices, zoning bylaws. You know, the, the tax policy that we have, you know, really. Your concrete actions to take, I understand as well that they need to be accompanied with. A, a, a social environment that is welcoming and inclusive. But I just think that we're, we got bigger things that we have to do than just that to make any real fundamental change.
So to that point, I was, I was going to mention that. I, in particular, liked some of the aspects that were written into the Lincoln. Charge related to this and they, they had a section on expected deliverables.
There, yeah.
And they also spoke to. When there were issues or recommendations that were identified, whether it were, they were community based. Directed at community based recommendations or whether they were directed to municipal recommendations. That they also pair those issues and recommendations with some baseline metrics. For how they would proceed to begin to work with. You know, that issue or recommendation. And so that we also had some basis for evaluating it. And first making policy changes at the municipal level if it concerned us. And then evaluating it, so I like that aspect of what was in the Lincoln charge. And maybe just giving more prominence to that in some of the material that was presented to us.
Okay. Other ideas?
Yeah, you know, trying to further to the comment that I made last week. You know, this definition of diversity that's in the initial paragraph under definitions. I actually believe that the paragraph that follows is perhaps more to the point. And that for the sake of a charge, it might be fine to just strike that first paragraph. And just to move so that we have, you know, one paragraph each on diversity, equity and inclusion. That I think it makes it a, just a more compact and more focused. Definition.
So I also noted that I thought it was either. We want to keep it broader, I think we need one paragraph. As opposed to do two separate paragraphs that I found. Not as helpful, and then the other thing I would just, this is a detail item, but not everyone agrees with the terminology Latinx. So to add Hispanic.
Latinx slash Hispanic, something like that?
Or just a separate item.
Okay, okay. Does anyone want to keep some of the first definition and incorporate it all in one paragraph? Or does everybody just want to have just the second paragraph?
When I looked at the examples of the things that the other commissions or committees had done. I think they all related to things in that second paragraph.
Just give substantial difference to the, the source of this. Charge and that we. We adopted to the maximum extent that we can and not make changes or will not make any substantial difference. Because I think the people who are likely to be most active in serving on this committee. I think probably have a significant investment in the contents of this charge. And so I would like to essentially to empower them to the maximum extent that we, we can. And give them the opportunity to do the work that they wish to do for the town.
I don't totally disagree with that. I, I do have one concern related to the, I think it's important to have some breadth of. In terms of the categories of diversity that we're speaking about. But at the same time, if it's. Way too broad. It's easy to lose the focus on. Some of the. Higher area of tensions, I guess I might add.
I mean, if we succeed in the first round with what's in paragraph two, we can expand the scope later.
Well, we also can. I think because the task is really difficult to define and how you even measure. The accomplishment of it. I would, I, I suggest that we would leave it to the committee to narrow the scope to the extent they feel that that. Would give them the opportunity to actually accomplish more. And so I would leave it to them to try to focus their attention on the most fertile ground for making a difference. Rather than have us in advance try to narrow it down.
So in other words, part of the task of the commission would be to define. Diversity, equity and inclusion, rather than have us define it upfront. Before they even get started.
If it were up to me, I think I would just write, I would have a very brief kind of. Charge which just said the first, the first task in the committee is to define their mission.
So I think some of the language that was picked up. By, in the material that was given to us. Referred to some language from Sudbury that used wording like respecting all aspects of identities. In addition to listing. A number of other specific categories and that may be a way to pull this together in one paragraph.
Right, and actually that language I see is in here, the first paragraph of the mission. Might be what we need. And on the third line right there, it says respecting all aspects of identities. Maybe we don't need to put in such a specific definition, we just have that first paragraph of the mission might be enough. And the committee could then go get started and come back to us if they want some changes to the charge. Our job today, I should say, is we're going to discuss this as a board and then we're going to hear comments from the public. And then we're going to have probably one member. Try to draft something up. We're not going to finish this charge tonight.
So one of the other questions I think that will impact how we approach the overall charge is. What kind of resources will be necessary to, for this committee and where those resources will be coming from?
Do you have an example?
Well, for example, a consultant, you know, if there is a budget that was required for this, I think that that could be quite appropriate in this case.
All right.
And they also, in the long list of examples of the things that they want to do to promote. Diversity, many of which are kind of like social and civic events. Budgets might be required for those activities.
I wanted to mention, I thought that the duties and responsibilities section was particularly crisp. I, I thought it was a nice list. And I don't know that, you know, I would like to kind of step back and make it kind of vague. And, and say that the first thing is to figure out your mission. I think that we actually have a fairly well-developed. Charge here and, and I mean, a clear, a clear set of things that someone could do. And I, I would really like to see the things that are in those duties and responsibilities.
I, I agree, and maybe we add one more bullet that is some kind of broad thing like, you know, any other. You know, because it doesn't give.
Well, it does give the last one, which is the opportunity to then come back and review the charge. In order to ensure its ongoing work is meaningful target, I mean, that really opens it up to, it can evolve, right? So I, I think that's great.
I think they did an excellent job, which is why I included it again. As a starting point for us to.
And while I, I found the examples to be helpful from just a point of view of understanding this, I, I think it doesn't belong in the charge.
No, it doesn't, it's just in our packet, examples.
Then when it comes to membership, I would suggest a committee of nine. And the reasoning there is that because the terms would be staggered. there is that because the terms would be staggered, that would just give you, you know, three per year to to roll over. And I think that that would be nice and balanced. The other thing is that I believe that nine would be enough people to kind of give some good representation within the community without being unwieldy in in terms of trying to hold meetings or or actually to staff the the committee, to seat the committee.
Do we think that we can get nine people, particularly as it's stated here, that with the goal that the majority of members shall be from historically underrepresented groups? Certainly, that would be our goal. Do we think, we don't want a situation where it's going to take us, you know, six or 12 months to recruit people and we we already have.
I think we should just try.
Yeah, we should definitely try.
And, you know, if if we struggle to seat the committee, then we'll.
I think we're going to have a lot of help
Yeah.
in identifying people.
Good. Yes, I think the public is agreeing with that. Okay, good. Okay, uh, how about some comments from the public? I will start with the live people who are here tonight. If anyone would like to come up to the microphone? If, oh Nancy, are you coming? You're thinking about it. Okay.
Nancy Brown, 96 Forest Ridge Road. And first off, I'd like to say that we really appreciate the real thought that you have given to this. I think we're on a good track. I I would hate to see us just just toss out most of the things on the first page because I think that gives not only the committee, but our town some guidance on what this committee is trying to do. But we're certainly not wedded to any particular wording. If that one paragraph seems superfluous, that's fine. We we're we're getting very excited that that there's going to be progress. We're moving in the right direction. And I'd just like to say, we appreciate how quickly you've risen to this.
Well, thank you. The League has done the work of drafting all of this, which is a huge help. And as Henry just said, we're going to also be asking the League and the faith community and schools and everyone to help recruit people for this committee. So definitely, it's everybody working together on this. Uh, yes, please come up.
My name is Erin Fife. Do you know my address?
Yes.
174 Hill Street. And I just wanted to say that I appreciated the discussion about a budget for this committee, because I think one of the things that will really demonstrate that the town is serious is making sure that the committee is able to really affect change. And and as you've noted, that that may include hiring consultant or or other things that will require funding. And I think if we're looking to recruit people, we also need to make sure that they understand that we've demonstrated that we're serious. We really want to make this committee something that is effective. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in the live audience? Then we'll turn to the Zoom people.
Hi there. I'm Elizabeth Cobb, 31 Pond G Lane. I'm a newcomer to Concord a year ago. So delighted to be here for the first time. I have been looking at these issues across the state. There's so many resources that Massachusetts has. The Boston Foundation has done a lot of research in this area. We have Ibram X Kendi at BU. He has a center. So I think that there are a lot of resources following on Erin's point about budget, but also that there are, you know, a lot of movements that are very, I'm sure, welcomed by others outside of Concord that we could use here in Concord. So I just wanted to alert the committee to those resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name is Louisa Posther from 139 Jenny Dugan Road, and I'm one of the co-chairs of the Concord Carlisle Human Rights Council. I was unable to make the previous meeting, but I'm happy to be here tonight. And mostly, I would like to thank you for considering all the good work that the League of Women Voters and Core have done. We've been so impressed with this energy towards this, towards this initiative. And we fully support all of their recommendations. And I was very happy to hear all your discussions about keeping the mission broad and working hard to recruit a very diverse group of people for the committee. We can also help recruit people. And I agree with Erin's comment about the budget showing serious commitment towards it, even if it's a small budget. And let's see, I think the whole thing will be such an exciting step for our whole community. You know, every single person in the community. So thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to make one very quick comment about the budget. I don't want to raise false expectations. We are working on a charge now. That doesn't mean that we're working on funding right now. The funding cycle goes through town meetings. So we're not really in sync with that yet, but we we will get there. But just so if someone doesn't think there will be a large budget for this tomorrow, it's not going to come that soon. Just. Okay, on Zoom, I think I saw Anita Tech Lee.
Thank you, Terry. I just wanted to clarify, in typical league fashion, the draft that you're of the charge that you're looking at what evolved over a series of of meetings that took place over, I think it was about six weeks. And with lots of input, we we have a good working group of about 20 people meets every other week. And so this, you know, the end product was not what we started with. And and so it it did involve, we took borrowed some pieces, particularly the mission statement is an adaptation of what was in Sudbury's. But the definitions started smaller and we, in the course of the six weeks that we reviewed this, it evolved with among the league members feeling strongly that it, the broader we make it to start with, the I would say that it would the more direction we would give to the ultimate commission. Normally, in a charge, you wouldn't necessarily include definitions, but because we are among ourselves had lots of questions. How do you define diversity, equity and inclusion? We felt that people looking at this document may also have similar questions so that this this is more comprehensive than you would have in a regular charge. And we appreciate the confusion perhaps that has has resulted from, you know, the duties and responsibilities were something that we developed ourselves and to give, again, people an idea of of what is going to happen. But we anticipate that the commission itself would narrow the focus once they figure out where their expertise and what the need is. You know, one of the first tasks they're going to, they're going to do is sort of is assess the need in the community. So I, this is, I I would consider it a working document. So I, you know, and we will support whatever version you ultimately accept. Obviously, we, you know, we do not, as Nancy said, we don't, we are not really adverse to narrowing the scope. Frankly, when we first started, we had one paragraph for diversity and we and we chose to add the second one because we felt it, the first one did not cover everything that we that we felt it needed to cover. Ultimately, it's it's your decision, but I just wanted you to realize we we did not just crank this out overnight. This really was a document that evolved over the course of several weeks and several meetings and involved about 20 people. So thank you.
Thank you. Other people from Zoom who wish to comment?
We have Linda Ziffern. Linda, if you want, go ahead. No, wait, Vivian Sang, if you'd like, go ahead.
Yes. Hi, Vivian Sang, 1128 Odemarborough Road. Two comments, please. First, I I want to speak in favor of allowing the commission itself to redefine the charge as part of their work. In in the in the discussion about focus versus breadth of mission, I want to remind everybody how we came to this point. Why is the country talking about anti racism? Why is the country and almost every municipality talking about DEIC? It is because of the murder of a black man, George Floyd, that has been characterized by many as having awakened the country to the historic injustice. And and in that vein, you know, there's much to be said about being broad and inclusive in the in the general sense of the word. There's, but there's much more to be said about the necessity of focus. And and I believe that the focus has to be what is our historic challenge, which is what what has the history of slavery, the enslavement of black people engendered in this country? Culturally, politically, economically, socially, philosophically. And and that is white supremacy. If we if we don't keep our eye on the prize, which I would submit is dismantling white supremacy, we would not make real progress. So that that is one cautionary note for the work of the commission. And secondly, you know, in terms of recruiting for membership in the commission, there are certainly many organizations who's already doing the work and and many very well qualified and experienced individuals who are who have been in this anti racist space for quite a while and whose learnings can greatly benefit the work of the commission. By the same token, it is very critical for the commission to be populated by the effective demographics, I would say. For example, the schools, all of the schools, elementary, middle and and high high school need to be represented. The educators need to be represented and the students need to be represented because I think that is where a lot of the work is focused on. And so I would recommend for your consideration, sort of, I don't know, requirement might be too strong of a word, but but and, you know, recruiting from the parent associations, from the teachers association and the student representatives of the 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 schools that that we have in Concord and Carlisle as as potential members of the commission.
Okay, thank you, Vivian. Any other comments from people on Zoom? Or from the public that is here today? Would the board have additional comments?
Yeah, I I just think that so far, we've heard about five comments about the drafting. And, you know, we talked about maybe going away and and redrafting. And in fact, we do have a meeting next week. But I just wondered if I could just briefly walk through what I've heard as potential feedback so that maybe it's almost just a you know, simple revision that is discussed here rather than just, you know, throwing words in the air and redoing because indeed, there's been a lot of work done.
May I see before you start that, if I could just? Go ahead. Terry asked if there were any other quick comments. And one comment I would make is that somebody from the library on the membership included in the membership, I think would give a excellent townwide platform for all kinds of distribution of events, ideas, communications, all kinds of things. Engagement with the public.
Seems like though we would need to speak with the library first to see if they're ready to do that, though. Right? I mean, with staff.
We often, we often define categories of what we think should be represented. Right, we often do that. And then if we can't recruit anybody, we have an example of that tonight, as a matter of fact. We have the library trustees, the friends of the library, the library committee. We have, yeah, there might be someone out of all those groups. Matt, are you proposing sharing your screen? Or how do you want to do this?
Oh, gosh, I hadn't thought about that. I'm not on the Zoom.
All right, just go through it the way you want.
But yeah, so I think the the first comment that we've had, there there've been discussions in both directions is about possibly consolidating the diversity definition to a single paragraph. My proposal had been just to use the second paragraph as the starting point, given that it also ends with and other groups. But that there've been debates about either being as broad as possible or focusing. So I think that's the sort of most open ended feedback that we've had so far that would be, I think we need to just come to consensus on how that should be dealt with.
Right.
The other comments are very straightforward. So adding Hispanic in the list of groups. I I don't know if others agreed with my suggestion of making the commission nine members.
I like that idea.
Then adding a member from the library and a member from the school DEI committee among the other members. And I believe that's it.
That's great.
I mean, so I almost, we're almost at the level of if if it was as simple as, for example, striking that first paragraph under definitions, we would have, we would have a charge.
Okay, I have a suggestion about that. So we heard debate on both sides. And what I'm thinking is, I'm kind of thinking along the lines of what Linda said. I don't know if you meant this exactly, Linda, but to make it grammatically the same or something, to have one paragraph for diversity, just like we have one paragraph for equity and one for inclusion. And so I was thinking of having the second paragraph there where it says diversity especially refers to population groups that have been historically underrepresented, da, 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 da. But then, you know, we could also put in, you know, combining these paragraphs, in other words, but but saying especially refers to the groups that are historically represented.
Well, maybe what we should do is have an inclusive process since this is
Right.
inclusion is one of the goals here.
Right.
So why don't we table this for tonight, just and offer the opportunity for folks to comment on this this issue in particular, and maybe even suggest a consolidated paragraph? And I also wanted to say there was one other comment that I didn't address, which was the question about the commission setting, updating its own charge. And I would have to say that I like instead the last bullet of the existing rules, you know, duties and responsibilities, which is they could come to us
Right.
in order to do that. I I think having the the commission change its charge on its own, it 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 makes it very difficult to understand what what a charge is even.
Right. I agree with that. I was thinking that the commission would be encouraged to look at its charge and to come as often as they want to, you know.
To ensure it's meaningful target.
And to suggest amendments, changes, and and probably the select board would be amenable to all of those, if not most of those changes. But just so that we're kept in the loop of what's happening, I do agree that I like this last bullet.
And then we need the boilerplate about open meeting.
Right.
It's in there. Yeah, it's in there. They'll choose a chair, the clerk, all meetings will comply with the provisions of meeting law, public records law, complex of interest.
Right, it's in the membership section.
Under membership.
So I think Matt is correct. We do have pretty much a good charges. As Anita said, the League spent many, many meetings on this already and saved us quite a bit of time. So that boilerplate can be lifted and just moved to the more standard format that we're used to.
Okay, not putting it under membership.
Yeah, let's just put this in the usual A, B, C, D thing that we have, like A is purpose and B is membership, but all the wording. Like A is purpose and B is membership, but all the wording.
Okay.
So I think I'd like to have a motion that we accept this charge as Matt.
I'd say let's wait until next week.
Oh, I see. All right. Well, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Let's see if we get some language then. And in the meantime, update the charge to reflect all these comments.
Right, right.
And then we'll, I think, have a relatively compact motion next week.
Okay, okay.
I don't think one week is going to.
No, no, I think we could probably finalize it next week.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, anyone interested in serving on this commission or nominating your friends, your neighbors, your colleagues, please go online.
But you can't submit in court yet.
Yes, you can.
Well, actually, I did create the slot for just D I commission on the green card. It's just in case anybody wants to submit in advance.
All right, so go ahead and start thinking about people who should be serving on this. I know one of the people who spoke tonight has put in a green card. So thank you. So that's great. Thanks in advance to everyone who worked on this and in advance to everyone who's going to do the job. All right. So our next item is going to be finalized and adopt the charge for the fiber broadband completion committee. We'll wait a moment here. That's fine. We'll get organized here. Thank you.
Thank you.
So last week, we had a draft and we have what might be a final draft tonight. Basically, I took all the comments from last week and there weren't a lot of changes since last week. There is one possible major change that may be something we'll talk about. But first, let's see, what do you members think about the changes that are shown here in this? You have two versions, one's got tracked changes and one's a clean one.
I guess, you know, my feeling about this is similar to kind of comments of me about other charges is I just still think that we should eliminate as much language that's really just, you know, background that really should focus on what is it that this committee should be doing? And so like, you know, the fiber optic network is clearly a valuable asset to the town. I don't, and even today, fiber provides fast, reliable broadband. I think that what we could skip those paragraphs and even Article forty one asks for this and the small steps and conservative goals. I think that we would just go right from the first paragraph to the one that says the F B C C will study. I don't think any of the rest is essential to the charge.
Okay, so it would say the purpose of the fiber broadband completion task force is to study and recommend appropriate solutions for the completion of Concord's fiber optic network known as Concord Light Broadband, so that this network can offer broadband service throughout the town. And then the F B C C will study, da, da, da. Okay, how do other people feel about that?
I agree, but I wanted to also discuss the focus of the committee, which I really think is the completion of expanding broadband to the twenty to twenty-five percent of the households of the residences that don't have it. And I don't think, and I think we want to have some really technical folks on the committee, but I'm not sure, this has already been said and I've been thinking about it, that barriers to subscription growth are, is part of that. It's more, the focus is why, how do we physically get this to happen or technically, and how much is it going to cost? And how is that all going to work as opposed to a marketing piece of it? I think that's plenty for a group to undertake.
So Susan, are you referring to on the next last page where it's got an A, B, and C?
Yeah, B.
You're taking, you want to take out B. I don't have Article forty one in front of me. I don't know if anyone does. Some of these things might have been specified, but I don't remember if this exactly was. Stevens looking that up. Let's go to the next comment while we look that up. Linda, Henry, do you have some comments on this charge?
No.
Okay.
So I do agree that reference in that second paragraph reference to the five to seven percent of residential parcels representing twenty to twenty-five percent of individuals addresses not currently getting service. I really think that needs to be kept and included.
The second paragraph.
Certainly the last, beginning with a recent G I S data analysis.
Okay.
I'd be fine with that.
Yeah, okay.
So just add that on to the end of the first paragraph.
And I think often we make direct reference to the article that gave birth to a new committee charge. So whether we reference that down below somewhere or.
And it's in the background, yeah.
It's just that, yeah, I mean, that sentence doesn't really, it says Article forty one, it urges the town issue and decrease the availability and work towards hundred percent completion. And that sentence doesn't actually say and create this committee, which is actually what this charge is about.
Yeah, so you could.
So it's really talking about stuff that's outside of the scope of this charge.
You could almost asterisk the title of the committee and then down at the very bottom, just say Article forty one of.
Or, yeah, as voted by town meeting, yeah, you know, as authorized.
Yeah, I think I'll put that.
That's a better way.
As requested by Article forty one.
Or mandated or required, voted.
Okay, all right, great.
Was the question whether or not those three, A, B, C, I don't know.
Yeah.
They were in the motion is, you know, here to here. And then the narrative is several pages after that, which is really what is kind of front ending this. But the, it was the requirements were expanding installation.
Okay.
Barriers, investing opportunities, prepare reports.
What does it say about barriers? What is the verbiage?
Exploting barriers to conquer light broadband subscription growth.
Yeah, so it's verbatim.
So that's not in the background narrative. That's actually in the real.
That's in the motion.
Right, and so we'll keep that and that was intended. But then the other thing on membership, I just wonder if we should highlight that the citizens at large, you know, are we're going to emphasize citizens at large that have expertise in the field.
I say yes to the latter.
Yes, with expertise.
Okay.
Yep, okay.
And then I thought that.
What is the name of this field, telecommunications?
In the broadband networking field, even better.
Well, that might be too narrow.
Well, I mean, with a emphasis on those that have or something with a preference for something like that. Once again, we can't force people to join the committee or the task force. And then I thought that the section on duties and responsibilities was fine except for that, that is a starting point for its recommend. Yeah, I mentioned this last time. I just would get rid of the whole list of stuff that is, should be in the report. I think that, you know, shall be divided into, the report shall be divided into three aspects of completion set forth in Article forty one and repeated in section A above. That's fine, but then below, I don't know, shall include the following items. I don't know that that is all needed.
The one, two, three, four, five.
Right, the one, two, three, four, five. And then the, you know, all the stuff even that follows the A, B, C that follows. I don't think any of that is necessary.
Well, but the A, B, C, we just said it came right out of the.
Right, but we don't need to detail out what's in each of those, right, in the charge. The task force will come up with all those things. What does they mean by the last five, seven percent of streets? What do they mean by, in the charge, we just say these three things.
The thing, B, the thing, C, okay.
See what I mean? So I don't think any of this section, and that would make it a much more compact charge, much closer to what a normal charge would look like. And then we have D, and that's all normal. So.
And we're eliminating the appendix to the charge.
Well, yeah.
If you've referenced it.
Right, now we can eliminate that, okay. I do think that the people whose input we saw, such as the petitioner and C M L P, they did give a lot of thought to this and all of this language comes from those people and they may argue to keep it all in, but it's.
Into the charge? I mean, again, I expect that the report would have all this in it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Which is the thing that will last beyond the task force.
Some of those people are likely to be on the committee and they're going to reference Article forty one and see it anyway.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, the charge is just, hey, here, let's get going. Here's how many people, here's what you're going to study, go to.
Okay. Are there public comments? From live public comments, anybody? Public comments on Zoom?
We have David Allen, who has standards. David, if you want to go ahead.
David Allen?
Let's see, well, won't let me turn on my camera. Perhaps you can hear me.
I can hear you.
Great. Would request that you circulate early enough for the community of interested folk, of which there are a number out here, this revision, so we can all take a look at it and of course, offer thoughts once we have that. And I appreciate your discussion this evening. I thought it was quite effective. Thanks.
Okay. All right, so I will, I will put together what I've heard tonight and we will take another look next week.
Yeah, I think we'll be able to vote.
I think we will too. I think I, if I.
Tried to write a motion on this with those changes.
No, 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 we're not ready to do that.
Yeah.
I mean, there is also a philosophical discussion about how much this task force can actually take on in the first six months.
Well, that's my one concern, of course, is that, you know, it's another, it's another week. That six months is only twenty-six weeks. So, you know, we just took four percent of their time.
Actually, now that we have the calendar, I'm going to take a look at that February one. Maybe it can go out in another couple of weeks or something. It's supposed to be one week before.
I mean, I think that the recruiting should start now, just like with the.
Absolutely.
Try to get this, so we can just fire the starting gun when.
Okay, so maybe next week we'll even start appointing people to some of these committees.
Nominating at least.
Yeah, nominating, that's what I mean. Okay, very good. So let's move on now to the year end transfers. We have Carrie LaFleur, if I missed, directly here.
I'm here this evening to talk to you about the final budget adjustments that we need for fiscal twenty-one, which is the year that ended June thirty, twenty twenty-one. Before I start, I just want to mention a couple of things that I want to make sure people understand the action that's being proposed. So the fiscal twenty twenty-one budget was approved, it was approved at the town meeting in twenty twenty and then it was just adjusted at the annual town meeting. And I think there are some questions about why, two weeks before the year ended, did we make some adjustments? And then we get to the end of the year and we need some additional adjustments.
Well, and take money out of the same fund and put it back in this.
Yeah, so I'm here to talk about that this evening. So I think the first thing to keep in mind is that even with these adjustments, we will be closing the fiscal twenty twenty-one budget with an unspent appropriation or surplus of about one point two million dollars. And we have already committed about eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand of that to carry forward into fiscal twenty twenty-two. But we will still be returning over three hundred thousand dollars to free cash. So I wanted to make that point.
Carrie, just remind us, what is that being carried forward into? Is it one or two big projects or lots of things?
It is, it is just being carried forward to offset the entire budget, the entire fiscal twenty twenty-two budget. And this is somewhat unusual and it really has to do with the fact that the last two fiscal years, because of COVID, our operations haven't been at a hundred percent. But we've budgeted and raised revenue for a hundred percent, but we haven't expended it. So rather than having that unexpended amount close to free cash and then raise it again, it makes sense to, from a taxpayer's perspective, just to sort of recapture that and use that to fund the budget. So, and I also want to make sure people understand these are transfers. So we're just requesting to move from already appropriated line items to two other line items. This isn't a request for additional spending. So just getting back then to the transfers. We have two transfers that remain. One is public safety. There is, and I'll mention there is a memo in your packet. One is public safety and the request here is to transfer a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into public safety and then one is debt service. And the request is to transfer forty thousand into debt service. And these amounts would be coming from our insurance accounts. So in total, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars from insurance. And the reason we have surplus in insurance is we're making estimates about how many eligible employees will be taking health insurance benefits and what our property liability and casualty insurance premiums will be, you know, several months in advance of when we do those renewals. So we do have funds available there. So the, the question, Matt, that you asked, you know, why are we doing this now? And, you know.
Taking money from public safety and then giving it back to public.
Right, and so honestly, in hindsight, I wish I could kick myself because when we started looking at the budget adjustments that were needed and we really started in January, we're really tracking the budget to see how we're going to end up. We had quite a surplus in public safety. And the reason we had a surplus is because of all of the CARES funding that was coming in. We had a good sense of, you know, what types of expenses would be eligible for reimbursement. And we also had vacancies in public safety and we had newer officers, both in police, fire, coming in and they're coming in at lower salaries. And we really had a huge surplus. And I probably should have said to myself, thirty years in government, don't ever, don't ever expect to have anything left over in public safety. But the choices we had then really were this big amount that we thought we would have in public safety. We also had a big amount in our, in our community services, social services, which really was coming from the library. And we did have a discussion at the, at the twenty twenty annual town. And we did have a discussion at the, at the, the twenty twenty annual town meeting. People were, were concerned about taking from the library, thinking that, that somehow we would be maybe either reducing services there, or that, that unspent money would be put in a bucket just for the library. And so the town manager and I talked it through, and we said, okay, let's go with public safety. In hindsight, again, I should have said, public safety never has, has anything left over, but that's, that's the decision that we made. So then what happened between the last two weeks? And it, it's really, it's, town meeting happened June thirteenth, the, the year closes June thirty, but we are processing fast and furious until June fif, until July fifteenth, because I mentioned in the, the information that was distributed, that the process that we follow, and the process that really most communities follow, is departments have access to their budget through June thirtieth. And so they can make commitments against their budget until June thirtieth, and then the invoices come in, and we're processing those. And it's, it's really quite a process to get all of those processed by July fifteenth. And then at the same time, come up with exactly all of the transfers that you need. And I, I do mention in the packet that we certainly could back up that date, and I have worked in other communities where they say, no, you can't, even though the budget goes through June thirtieth, you need to stop June fifteenth, or earlier than that. We certainly could do, do that. It would make things earlier. We haven't really had a problem here. I've been here for five years now. We haven't really had a big problem running things through June thirty, but this year is, it's, it's just crazy. It's really, it's really crazy. So when I talked to the finance committee about this, they asked questions about, are you concerned with the, with the closing process? Do you expect that this is going to be a problem going forward? And no, I, I don't, based on the, my brief history here with the town, with working with all of the department managers. It's just very, very difficult with COVID. And, and I, I mentioned the, the adjustments, because when this was presented to the finance committee on July twenty-second, based on what we were seeing, we thought we needed much larger transfers in public safety. What has happened since then is we continue to submit documentation to our liaison at the state regarding the CARES funding, and we're just getting better information on what they will cover. And in, in public safety, it really has to do with the police expenditure. So early on, we had a, a real good understanding of what fire OT expenses CARES would cover, but we had a much, much less of an understanding in terms of police. And as everybody is working through all of these expenses, we're just getting approvals on last year's expenditures to be covered through CARES. And we feel, and I'm sure you do as well, it's beneficial for us to keep working at this, because the, the more that we can get reimbursed, the less that we have to pay locally. So it is, it's messy. It's an embarrassment to me, because I, as I said, I, I should have said, you know what, we, we have the money left over in, in the library, and, and that's where it should come from. And people should understand that the library has not, for the, the entire fiscal twenty-one, the library has not been at a hundred percent. So, and there have been some vacancies at the library that haven't been filled, because, you know, why, why fill the vacancies i- if you're not going to, if you're not yet open? And that was the case for most of the year. So that, that's really, and I apologize that it is as messy as it is.
So, so Carrie, it sounds like there's two main things that happen in public safety, if I got this right. One is just the COVID, everyone trying to understand, and the state keep changing the rules and trying to understand what is covered and what's not. And so hopefully we won't go through that with ARPA. We'll, we'll, we'll figure out what we're doing, and so that should be solved. And the other thing that I guess came up was this, I, I'm reading in this memo, largely a result of the unbudgeted purchase of cruisers. Can you talk about that?
Sure. And, and I just want to say, I, I, I don't want anybody to think that the state has been changing its mind. It's just, this is, it's, it's fluid, it's evolving. And, and we're getting, we're getting better information, so it, it's not, we're, we're all going through this together. So the one thing that I, I don't believe that I mentioned, in public safety, if, if you look on the second page in, in this very, this chart, that's probably very hard to read, you can see that the, the net adjustment that was made to public safety is about a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And the, the transfer we're looking for right now is for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have one five thousand dollar adjustment that we're still waiting for, so, so it shows, it shows the, the deficit is about a hundred and forty-five thousand, but I'm asking for a hundred and fifty, because we have one other piece that's in play, a small piece. So in, in terms of the, if we hadn't made any adjustment to public safety, they, they would have been in the black, just barely at the end of the year. And so the issue with the cruisers and town manager certainly can jump in if, if I'm not providing enough clarity. The, the police chief was looking at his budget, believing that he had the money in, in the budget, and he would have, except for that transfer. And so I think there was just a, a, a misread of what was available, what would be left over in the budget to purchase those cruisers.
I just have a question about that. What is the normal turnover? I mean, I thought that those things are kind of in their capital budget equipment like that, and I wondered, in a typical year, how many vehicles do they cruise? I don't know how many there are altogether, but how many would they purchase?
So in, in a typical year, they would be purchasing two to three marked cruisers. And what I've learned through this process is that historically, the town has not included the unmarked cruisers in the capital plan, but that at the end of the year, if there is funding available, those unmarked cruisers are being replaced, because they're not, they're not on the same replacement schedule as the marked cruisers. Now, going forward, we want to include everything in the capital plan, and so we will be doing that going forward, but there has been a, a long-term pattern of replacing the unmarked cruisers with budget surplus, if it remains.
I mean, how old were the ones that were replaced?
Yeah, I don't know.
I got the chief to prepare a, a replacement schedule.
Because it just is kind of odd to have a sort of surprise purchase of cruisers.
Well, at FinCom, they said something that I didn't follow, about some chips that were.
I mean, even if it's opportunistic.
Yeah, well, because there was a chip problem, they were, I don't.
Part of the, part of the issue was that we were advised by our supplier that there was a bat, like you had to basically purchase the vehicle and put your order in now to get it in a few months. And there was a, a longer, much longer lead time than normal for police vehicles, we get, for all vehicles, as we've discovered, because of chips, and so, because they had the funds available, and they requested, could they advance, you know, use FY twenty-one money to place these orders? And we said yes.
I just have a, my clarification question. On the, the first page of the August six memo, it says four hundred thousand for public safety, but you're talking about it was a hu, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Correct. So the, the first page is what originally went to the finance committee on July twenty-second.
Okay.
And then we have even better information now, and have been able to reduce the amount needed.
And that's what's on this.
That's what, on the second page.
Okay, so I have another question about in the memo from July fifteenth. This is on the second page, quite near the end. It says surplus appropriations exist in lines twelve and thirteen. Those are insurance lines, I think, yes. Due to actual expense being less, and significant portions of unemployment expense covered by federal government. And then when I looked on this deep, more detailed chart for lines twelve and thirteen, there's nothing in the grant reimbursement part, um, column for. So I wondered what the federal funds were that covered unemployment expense.
Sure, so that, and I, I'm not remembering the, the exact name of the program, that the, for a period of time, the federal government was offering an, an extra unemployment benefit amount. That was that originally, or there was, there was also a lot of fraud that was associated with, with those claims. So originally, the town was being charged for what we were later able to identify as fraudulent claims. The reason it's not showing here is it, we never had to pay it. It was accumulating at, at our unemployment with the, with the DUA, with our account with the DUA. And it has since been collected or resolved. The issues have been resolved. So it's not showing there, because it's not anything that we paid out, and, and it came back in as a reas, as a reimbursement. It was just a liability on our account that was cleared through the investigation of, of the claims.
Thank you.
How does the gifted vehicle that we noted in the consent agenda tonight fit into the, I don't know if it's one for you, or it's for.
I haven't had that discussion with the chief, but what that does to the replacement schedule, that obviously happens the week before last, or something like that.
Was it kind of a surprise?
Yeah.
Really?
Surprise, it was the Friday before I left for vacation. I was like, this is a great, we're off to great starts.
Take a Tesla.
No, and, and the Terries are, are very generous, and I think we, we saw it the same way, which we didn't want to make it an administrative vehicle. We wanted to be an interceptor, because I think we visualize an all-electric fleet, including our interceptors. And so.
And they're pretty quick.
Those Teslas, yeah, they, they get around. And so we haven't really even had, I mean, I, I think the chief is doing his research in terms of how do the onboard electrical systems that go along with patrol cars.
It's not trivial.
Right. Because I remember this, when hybrids came out, it was, that was the big issue, was the interface of the electrical systems.
Outfits, that, that's their whole job is to.
They do it, but I think it's, what I've seen is predominantly administrative, which is a different, they do have some aftermarket electrical stuff, but not like a patrol car.
Okay.
So I, we, we're working on that. I mean, I think the idea is we won't have to replace, at the, at the end of this fiscal year, we won't have to replace.
Anything else.
But I, I need to go through the list with, with the chief and confirm that. And then hopefully.
Because of the chips.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't want to, we didn't want to wait till June, or sorry, July to process with FY twenty-two and, and lose when everybody, when every other community that has a July first fiscal year date puts their orders in, we thought we could, our supplier led, told us that we could stay ahead of the line if we did it, and because we had the, we did, and then we didn't, and then we did.
No, and that's for the Tesla, that you haven't gotten.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's going to be a long lead time as well, too.
Okay.
Great. I wanted to comment about the end of your memo, Carrie, that your suggestion, I had a comment and a question, that this could be tightened up in, a little bit in terms of the spending deeds. Where you say department spending and our commitment of funds will, would need to cease on or about June fifteenth. Would it really need to cease, or would it be like a pause while everybody looks at the numbers? And then, you know, gets permission from the town manager, so it wouldn't have to be like totally ceasing it, right?
Well, the, I, I like cease. And, and the reason I say that is because, so our process is any purchase over two thousand dollars requires a purchase order. Anything under two thousand dollars doesn't require a purchase order. So the only things that we see in finance or in theory, see in finance before a money is committed, is something over two thousand dollars. So there, you, there are many departments that have small budgets that, that a purchase of fifteen hundred dollars, or multiple purchases of fifteen hundred dollars, is not going to be in our system until the bill is paid. And so it's, it's very, it, I, I would be concerned that there still would be issues.
I see, yeah, okay. All right. Do people have other questions for Carrie or for?
So Carrie, if I understand you correctly, um, not strictly enforcing in jail, chapter forty-four, as many other communities are also not doing, is where you want to stay at this point? Am I understanding that correctly, or?
I think I am, or I shouldn't say I think, I, I'm open. I understand that the concern that maybe you have, that, that maybe finance committee members have, that maybe some members of the public have, that it, the law says that the transfers need to occur by July fifteenth at the latest. I, I can tell you, I've, I've worked, most of the communities I've worked in, we we endeavor to, to get to that date, but it is impossible to do that unless you move, unless you cut off your purchases at least two weeks ahead of time, because you can't, you can't continue to encumber to, to the thirtieth, and then expect that vendors have submitted all of the bills, and that you've gotten all of those bills processed. So I have had conversations, as I, I mentioned, with our auditor, because when I, when I came here, the audit firm that the town of Concord uses is one I had used, worked with many, many years ago, but didn't have any recent history with that firm. So I talked to them about the practice, because this is a longstanding practice of the town, as it is with many other towns. And he indicated that he understood the difficulty in meeting that, and that, that this practice would never be a management letter issue for him. And, and that has been the same with other firms that I have, have used. But I don't, I'm certainly not opposed. I am the the world's biggest rule follower, so to stand here and say, this one doesn't bother me. I don't have any issue if there is discomfort among the boards that have to approve this in making changes, so that we can get you to where you're comfortable, because it's.
On the other hand, the flexibility benefits the town, does it not?
The, there are, it does affect, impact operations that, that right in the, right in the middle, especially for pull-up works and others, that it's right in the middle of their busiest time of year. In town I was in, we did cut off, or attempt to cut off invoices and expenditures at June fifteenth, and it created its own set of headaches for the organization. And so I think, and this is one of those things that legislators sometimes know that it's a problem, but it would take them too much effort to make the change to the legislation that really needs to be done, to make it reflect what actually happens out in communities, so they just kind of accept that this is the, the, the way it is. And so I think if I had a preference, it would be to do it the way we do it, even though I do, but, but to try and get it as close as possible. And Carrie really did push this year to try and get these done by the fifteenth. But at the same time, being able to use all of the fiscal year's resources for all of the fiscal year is also important for operation.
Well, one thing that might help a little bit is, um, it, it said somewhere that the select board traditionally wants to wait until after the finance committee votes. I personally don't care. If it's easier to schedule it the other way around, and, and I don't know if members agree with me, but that might help save a week or even two weeks, and I don't know how to.
I, I think we should wait for this finance committee. I think that's a clear process.
I mean, if it puts us in no August.
Well, I mean, it's.
Okay.
What would be the consequence of non-compliance in chapter forty-four, if, if it were enforced by the Department of Revenue? What would happen if?
Yeah, so, so really, this, the same thing, you know, we've had, when we were talking about legal services, you know, what, what happens if, if we don't make that budget adjustment? So it, it's, it would be the same consequences as what we've talked about before, that we would have a deficit in an account, and we wouldn't have the legal authority to have that deficit. So it would need to be raised on the recap, the tax recap the following year. The recap, the tax recap the following year.
So we're just come out of a different budget essentially.
Yes, but we would, we would have to, to say it's fifty thousand dollars and, and we had it somewhere else in the budget. But we missed the deadline, or, or we didn't comply, and the Department of Revenue said you can't do that, so that fifty thousand dollars. Falls to fund balance for that year, so you raised it, you didn't use it, it goes into our savings. And then the following year, you're gonna raise that same fifty thousand dollars. Now you could, in theory, you could say that you'll have town meeting paid out of free cash, so you, you could do that. But, but absent that, you're essentially taxing people twice. Which we don't wanna do.
But just for that amount.
For that amount, correct.
Any additional questions or comments? Are we ready for a motion on this?
Move to approve the F Y twenty-one year-end transfers as included in the meeting materials.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Okay, our next item is economic vitality division reorganization. So we had a discussion of this last week, and. I think a number of people were ready to vote at that time, um, I was one of the people who was not ready to vote, I had. Several conversations with Stephen and Carrie since then. Is, does anybody have any questions before I?
Yeah, I just have one, and, and I unfortunately don't have all the details right in front of me, but. I attended a recreation commission meeting this past week, and, um, in the course of that meeting, uh, the recreation director said. There's this fund we can't spend anymore, and thank goodness, we still have money that we can still do this event, and, and so. It seemed like there was some problem, I don't know, with the allocation of. The reallocation of funds that might be impacting the, the recreation department, I, I wasn't very clear on. What was being said, but it was strike, striking, I guess. That there seemed to be a fund that's no longer accessible to, to that, uh, department.
I don't care if you're aware, I'm not aware of that.
It, it's hard with that amount of information.
I should have like a button-down answer, but it, it was a topic at the meeting.
The, the funding for this activity that was previously run through. The rec revolving fund, it, it's just the funding, it's, it's just the money that's generated from the visitor's center that. Was, was being, is proposed to be moved into the general.
This twenty-four thousand five hundred dollar fund, but you're saying the recreation, uh, department doesn't pay for any other temporary. Status employees out of that fund typically?
Not, not out of this, this fund, so we have, we have the rec revolving fund that has. Um, a couple of different activities that is. Run through it, but we do segregate them, we have like sub revolving funds, if you will, and this one is just for. The visitor center, visitor center activity, they have other.
Are there any recreation department activities that were paid out of the visitor center budget? In the past?
Do you mean like?
An activity, some sort of activity, yeah, some activity, it was like, I thought it was like an event, it was like a one-day event. It, it, that, you know, like the Christmas tree lighting or something like that. Uh, again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's, the, the structural, the, the point of all the cases here, we, we can let her, she can comment on that, but. Um, the point of the, of the, of the, of the proposal is really just. Um, alignment for, um, ease and to facilitate, um, more efficient economic vitality. As I explained, I think in the first presentation, because we're going from revolving fund to general fund. There's gonna be a transition that's not, that may, that may take a couple of years to get us to create a special revenue account, so there's gonna be a couple of. Things to work out as we go, but I know, uh, Carrie, Kate and Marcia have been, you know, discussing this at length and, and. We have a plan, it just, um, you know, it's, it's, it's complicated, I guess it's, it's, um.
Yeah, I just wanted to ensure that the complications weren't getting in the way of.
Yeah, okay, if you wanna add to that.
Can, can you hear me? Okay, hi, sorry, I'm having an issue with my camera, so you get to stare at just my face there, but, um. Matt, I think what, um, what Anna was talking about was, um, a fundraiser that they were having at Trails End. Um, and the fundraiser, um, is actually for camp scholarships through the Danard Di Stefano. Um, fund, uh, and that, that actually doesn't have anything to do with tourism or economic vitality. When, uh, when Danard Di Stefano, who was the longtime rec director, was retiring, a group of citizens raised quite a bit of money, actually. Um, in his name and in his honor for, um, kids to be able to attend various summer camps. And over the years, um, that has been, uh, used up, and there's about twenty thousand dollars left. And so there's an effort, um, to sort of rebuild that fund to a, a healthier balance. In the wake both of COVID and, and just seeing that camps are becoming more expensive. Um, and I'm sorry, I missed the, the second question you asked, are there other things that are run through revolving?
Well, I guess, yeah, the question was that, I guess they said that, a, a, and I'm sorry, I don't even wanna try. Raise it, cause I may have misunderstood, it was about that they, there was a fund that you could no longer use. But fortunately, this activity was not in that fund, so they were able to proceed with the event. That was the, that's my recollection, and it turns out, it, it wasn't an impediment, but I just wanted to ensure that. You know, this reshuffling of funds in order to support this organizational change is not creating any. Impediments to the operations of these departments, that's all, and the activities that they're able to support.
Sure, I see, um, so I can, I can dig in a little more, but I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's about the Danard Di Stefano fund, and. Um, as far as, uh, I think that the hardship, it's not really a hardship, but I think that the complication. Um, money-wise is, is gonna come basically to D P L M from rec revolving, because of course. The revolving of fund has a little bit more leeway as far as, um, ex- expending things, and so. You know, creating a, a separate revolving account for visitor and tourism services, I think is something that. That the manager is, um, is thinking about it, and I think that, that'll probably be helpful for Marcia.
Okay, I have, um, some related questions to this too, so the budget that was voted. At town meeting, that was in the general government, is, is that right? And, and we're gonna need to trend, do a transfer to D P L M sometime before the end of the year?
Did you want me to take, so the money that you allocated or that was allocated at, um, at town meeting. Is, uh, an amount that was in the revolving account, I'm sorry, that was in the general fund. Um, I don't think that you necessarily need to transfer it from one department to another, it would just be that. You know, Marcia would be the custodian of those funds, um, versus it being in my office.
Okay, so that, that's my next question, was, uh, who prepared the budget and who, who will be monitoring it, so it sounds like it's Marcia? Okay, and then my last question is, how much revenue? For the tourism program came in approximately last year through the revolving fund? And what's the estimate for this year? Um, cause now it's gonna come in the general fund, I guess.
No, I, I think we, go ahead, Carrie.
So our, our assumption is that thirty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Is the revenue associated with the tours.
For F Y twenty-two.
For, um. Thirty, thirty-two, two fifty was for fiscal twenty-one, and. Yeah, about, about that same. Amount. It's not, it's not, it's, it's not as clear to see, because when you look at fiscal twenty-two, all of that activity is then folded into. A combined, um, but yes, we, the assumption is about the same.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from anybody? Okay, more questions, all right, um, I think we're ready for a motion on this one.
Would you have a, a question from the public or comments from the public?
Oh, we do, okay.
Greg Higgins.
Greg Higgins.
Hi. Hi, Greg Higgins here, fifty-one Cottage Lane, um, I'm, I'm here as the president of the Concord Business Partnership. And we wanna thank the chair and the board for this opportunity to speak tonight, and to the town for, uh, the creation of the economic vitality and tourism position. As a great support to our centers, businesses, we had several business development position folks. Uh, from towns, Bedford, Lexington, Hudson, and a few others come to our meetings. And discuss their methods of supporting their local stores and businesses, they tend to report directly to the town manager's office, however. We support the proposition of having the division report to the director of, of, uh, P L M. Uh, one forty-one Kai's Road plays a direct role in almost all of. The things impacting our businesses and therefore understand and support its position, positioning it there. We wanna thank, uh, thanks for the time and appreciate it, and think that Beth Williams will, will be a wonderful, uh. Addition to the town staff and hopefully, um, foster, uh, some progress in our business community, thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay, I did, I just found the transcript from the, uh, me, commission meeting, and so I can give you Anna's quote. Um, which maybe I was misunderstanding the context, so, um, the, she said that, um. The road race this year, uh, whi- which has typically, um. Been housed through the recreation revolving fund and Hunt Recreation Center, but moving forward, any and all fitness. And exercise-based events are going to be run through the BD Center, so that the funds hit the enterprise account. So we're working creatively to fill and create some program opportunities that aren't necessarily right in the swim lanes or the fitness rooms. Throughout town, so these are some new things coming, so. That's a totally different, totally different issue, okay, cause, you, you know, in the context of all this, it just sounded like, oh. They're having to avoid using this fund and they're, they're using the BD Center fund instead, so that, that's what I was concerned about.
I think that's kind of a business development change for BD, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, you're absolutely right, um, it was similar to what we were doing with having White Pond become. Um, sort of an osmos of BD as well, so that if you received a membership. To BD, you in turn had a membership to White Pond and vice versa, and so we're, we're trying to generate revenue. For BD outside of BD's four walls.
Okay. All right, I think we're ready for a vote here.
Uh, so. Uh, move to approve the economic vitality division reorganization is proposed by the town manager in the meeting materials.
Oh, all in favor? All opposed, I'm, I'm going to oppose based on, um. A comment that we made last week, I, I. Appreciate getting all the answers to most of these questions now, but I still am not totally comfortable yet with it, and I feel. Someone made a comment, I think it was you, Matt, that maybe one more year of smoothing this out might help, so I, I, I vote no. So four to one, I guess, is our vote on that one. Okay, but I totally support the idea of it, and thank you, Greg, for your comments, and thank you, Carrie. Now we will move on to the Civil War Monument Task Force. Uh, Henry, you wanna talk about this? Thank you for doing the draft.
Well, thank you, uh, this is, uh, I, I see, this is, uh, in effect, this is B, B E I in action. And that is that the, uh, it all arose, um, from, uh, recognition. That, um, a black citizen of Concord who served in the Civil War, uh, was not placed on the. Uh, the, the bronze plaque on the, uh, Civil War monument. And so, um, I was asked to help, uh, the cemetery director. And, uh, putting together a, um. Group of people who could review the standards and reviews to place names on. Uh, that particular monument and to, to, and because the original, um. Which made plaque, the plaque that was originally on that monument has been changed twice in subsequent years, it doesn't have the, quite. Quite the, um, standing that it might have, it was the orig- the real original one. And so, um, the idea was to make a final judgment on those people who should be included. On that plaque, and then for the, uh, to have a ad hoc committee, which would be a. A six-month lifespan to come back and make a recommendation to the, uh, to the board. About what should be done to remedy this situation, and whether it should be, the block, the plaque should be replaced. And to make a decision about the criteria for inclusion, and if necessary to, um. Recommend changes to the A T P that, uh, that related to the placement of names on, uh, on the town. War murals, so, um, so we took the, um. The information and the reason that this one has a lot of narrative on it, I know that, I'm, I'm sympathetic to Matt's. Comment that, um, narrative is not only, is not always useful in charges, but here, I think. Actually, for the benefit of the people who will serve on this committee, to have the history. Uh, and the, the background of the, uh, of the issue, uh, be described. In one place where it's easily accessible will be helpful to them, and so, uh, this, most of this. Historical narrative was put together by Ted Hopkins, and, um. Then we wanted to, um, since the, the object was to, um. Review of the appropriateness of inclusion of names, um, uh, uh. We wanted to have that ad hoc committee have people who had expertise and experience in historic, in history and. Civil War, um, so that they could, um, it was not to be broadly representative, it was to be. Some, a group of experts to make, uh, to make these decisions, and to come back to the board. With recommendations about inclusion, about the type of change that should be made, and to decide there was. Um, uh, there are some who thought that there, rather than, um, make changes to these existing monuments. There should be some kind of separate monument, which I think our sense was that that would not be a- appropriate. Um, and then all, all of the Congress, Civil War veterans should be treated exactly the same. Um, but that would be a recommendation that would be made by the committee, and, um. There are already several people who are, uh, who are happy to serve on the committee, that there are funds available to. Implement this decision, both from the town and from private sources, um, uh, should the decision be to replace the bronze plaque. Of the Civil War monument, and, um, um, that's about it. I think I got a report from them in six months.
All right, thank you, uh, Linda.
Thank you for all your work on this, and, um, it looks good, um, I would just like to add a little bit more narrative. Sorry, Matt. But just the benefit of the committee members, as you point out, um, on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, the select board unanimously voted. To authorize the town manager to have a separate plaque, um, honoring. And then it just goes on to say the rest of it, and. And, and also the, the vote ends by saying, and also encourage further study of the George Washington Dugan's plans in the original monument. So I'd hate to have that piece of history and vote that was taken by the select board not included.
Well, I, I have no problem, I don't think that.
You don't think that's important?
I'm not saying I don't think it's important. I think that that's a decision that really needs to be reconsidered. Because basically of the really core principle of Brown versus Board of Education, that separate is not equal. And therefore that there should be a separate monument, I think needs to be reconsidered as to whether that would be an appropriate resolution.
Well, the resolution conclude, concludes by saying, and we encourage further study of the George Washington Dugan's place in the original, on the original monument.
I think, I think on this point, if I may, is that you go from Rick Freeze in two thousand fourteen to May twenty, Tish Hopkins going to the Historic District Commission. She was only there as a result of that vote.
And she's going back in November.
Right. And she, actually she was there, the, the, so we, with the limitations that had been identified in your narrative about, about changing the actual monument plaque. We had determined that this was a, a, maybe another, a, not as good, but also an appropriate way to honor George Dugan's service. And so I asked Tish to lead the charge on presenting that to Historic District Commission. And so that, and then that picks up on your narrative on May twentieth. So I, I agree with Linda that it's an important step in the process.
We anticipated that this would follow.
So if you want to have that added to the narrative?
Right.
I have no, I really don't have a problem with doing that. I don't, certainly with us.
Okay.
The, 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 the point is to get the job done.
Right. So Linda, if you could send that, get that wording to Henry and he can, or you can, or you can add it in Linda, whichever.
Yeah, I just have two, two other quick
Okay.
comments, if I may. I was wondering section D, if you were really meant to say, but I hear you now in your narrative saying plaque. And it says tablet, so I didn't want, I didn't want it confused.
Alright, it's on the
Yeah.
fifth line, replacing the tablet.
Yeah, and I think he, in his verbal description, he's using one plaque, which I, I think is, is correct.
This tablet is listed in some of the background information. You know, it says a new tablet was made to the five, to add these five names. In the nineteen fifteen town meeting.
Yeah, anyway, what, whatever, however, we handle that, should be consistent. And then the only other comment I would make, and again, thank you for all the work on this, this is great that this is in play. Is that I'm wondering if we need to make reference for the committee to consider federal and state regulations and traditions regarding Civil War memorials. And the only reason I'm suggesting that is that did come up in the discussion that Trish.
That's the reason why they couldn't do it, yeah.
So I can send me that wording as well.
Okay.
And where would that go in the duties and responsibilities?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So I had a question really about the scope of the task force because while it did cross my mind, as I was reading through the background, whether that belonged to the charge. I actually was sympathetic to including it in the charge, just for the reasons that you were saying, Henry, but when I got to the bullets that said, you know, in nineteen ninety-eight, the family of a veteran that had recently died and had been in Pearl Harbor. And then the next one, that starts about a veteran's name for the Vietnam Memorial. I wondered why we were departing from the specific issue of George Dugan's place in history. And, and I, I now understand that in the, when I got to the duties and responsibilities, it said at the end, in addition, that shall make recommendations with regard to possible amendments to Act twenty-six. Which is the guidelines for placement of names on war memorials, of which those two other examples would be informative as to, you know, whether this, this should be done. But I just wonder, just very much in line with the comments I made about the other committees, you know, is that do we really want to expand the charge beyond this very clear issue around George Dugan? At, at this time, maybe you can come back at the end of the, of the report, you know, or, or and do that then, but I just don't know that we need to go, because it, all those issues that Linda raised about the status of, you know, federal and state, you know, approaches to these things, I think they really expand dramatically when you get to other conflicts.
The reason that those are in there, and I had, and I share your, share your reservations about putting them in. They had been in the original narrative that was given to me. And I, I probably should have explained that the only reason they're there is not to include those people, but rather to show the kinds of almost irrelevant reasons that had been given in the past for not including people. Such as the man who drowned on his, on the boat to Cuba. Because it could not be determined whether he died of foreign injuries or the, from drowning. And so I, I, I would be happy to take those out. The reason they were there is to essentially, as I say, show that how particular people had been about using almost irrational criteria for either inclusion or exclusion.
Yeah, so I would just suggest take those two out. I think, because otherwise everything is very focused on George Dugan and it, and it just makes a very nice backgrounder.
Well, what about this part? In addition, it shall make recommendations with
I think that that's okay, if the, if the report, you know, uses its experience to do that. Now, it, it won't necessarily change Act twenty-six. And to change Act twenty-six, we might need to form another task force. But, you know, it would be good to get that, at least the momentum going in terms of the input. I just think it's just too big a scope of you.
Right.
No, okay, I'm good with that.
I have a question about the membership. Do we want to include one person from Historic Commission, one from HDC, one from Cemetery Commission? Or do we just want to leave it broad?
I think we just leave it like this, because first of all, we've got lots of people that have to be serving on different other groups and it's just a stress for people. I think that also this is a very focused issue now.
Right.
And I, I think that the special skills and knowledge will be very helpful and everyone will appreciate.
Right, I think the reason I bring that up is because they have had strong opinions about this in the past. I, I wouldn't want
How about if we say it could include a member, because, you know, that way then we don't run into an App ten issue.
Or how about, oh great, no, it wouldn't be an App ten issue, because it would be like the CPC or something, where they
Well, only if the charge indicates that it could be a member from there.
Right, but Mike, maybe it should say in their duties and responsibilities that they consult with these three groups. I don't want them to come in with one recommendation, then we hear from one of these other committees that they disagree. You know, we want to come in with one solution.
Well, it's, it's gonna have to be the, the resolution, I think, will have to be endorsed by the Historical Commission. And the HDC in any event.
Right. So how about, before they come back to the select board, they go over it with those two bodies. And then when everyone agrees, then they come back with their recommendation.
We could just say that they will consult.
Yes, yes.
We'll consult the HDC and Historical. By the way, the, the November body they're going in front of is not the HDC, but I think it's the Historical Commission.
Right, they may need to consult with both. I, I don't know.
Well, I, I'm sure it is.
And maybe the Cemetery Committee, but maybe not them. Okay.
Well, I think essentially, Ms. Hopkins has been the acting as the staff person for this.
Right, right.
So am I, I assume we're not going to vote this one tonight. We'll vote it next week. With those changes, or are they compact enough that we could do it?
Give me your stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's, that's what we'll do, and we'll vote it, we'll vote it next week.
Alright, great. Okay. We are on to the draft town manager evaluation. So tonight, we're just announcing there is a draft. Five select board members from FY twenty-one participated, so that included Jane Hotchkiss. Twelve SMT and eighteen division managers from the staff participated. We also have Stephen's self-evaluation. Next week, we will approve the final eval. So if any select board members have comments on the select board portion of it, please get them to me by, let's say, early Thursday morning, so that I can get them in the packet. Yeah, Wednesday night, Thursday morning would be the latest, so I have Thursday to get them in and we'll have a final eval next week. And do not reply or just send them to me.
I, I would just also like to appreciate the amount of work that this must have taken to pull together. And secondly, to thank the town staff that participated at a very high level of participation. It was very impressive.
Yes, thirty, thirty out of thirty-five.
I mean, the, the, the evaluation is very unwieldy as a consequence of all the content that's there, but it's very comprehensive. And I think, well, anyway, I'll, I'll hold my comments.
No, I'm glad you said that, and I want to thank Amy Foley for all the time that she put in. It was an enormous amount of time, getting, getting the staff and a great response rate, so. Okay, our next item is appoint liaison to the Regional Emergency Communications Center Board. So Henry was kind enough to go to the first meeting. And I've been thinking it over, I think we do need a liaison. And I have the fewest assignments. So I'm going to volunteer to do this one, unless if someone else really wants it, that's great. But I'm happy to do it if people want me to.
I think you're the perfect person.
I think you were the biggest advocate for this on the board, I mean, as far as I know. I mean, I think we all voted for it, but the, it's still.
Okay. Alright, so we'll have a motion for that.
Except for me, I didn't end up voting for it. Because of another step.
Yeah, 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 that's
Okay, move to appoint Terry Ackerman as the liaison to the Regional Communications Center Board.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, I voted for it before I voted against it.
Okay. Alright, we are on certifying town meeting home rule petitions. So you need a formal vote to ratify Article thirty-one for the FY twenty, for the twenty-twenty-one town meeting. And two other articles for the previous year's town meeting that we didn't take a formal ratification vote, I'm told, so we need to do that now.
Okay.
So the town clerk's office isn't responsible for doing that?
So to give some, some background on this, so, come on, still Chris and I, our town manager's office got a memo from, or I got a certified, notarized copy of Article thirty-one from the twenty-twenty-one town meeting from the town clerk's office.
Right.
And Karen, and Karen Tari said that we needed to have the select board votes to ratify it and send it to our legislators. Now, of course Linda, you and Stephen last year just sent them in without, we didn't take the formal vote, but we still got them to the legislature.
Well, and we worked with the clerk's office on this, so we thought we were, admit them.
Right, so, so I don't think, there's, there's not necessarily a problem or anything, because they're going through the legislative process, the twenty-twenty articles. But we brought this to Stephen, Stephen, you can correct me or add anything. But Stephen checked in with town council, who advised us to take this.
Yeah, there's no, it's just, I'm, I'm just surprised, because we
Right. Yeah, I feel like
Isn't that what the vote normally says on the home rule petitions? It says with such terms as the select board may, you know, on such terms as a select board may approve or something to that effect. And I assume that the actual legislation is drafted or reviewed by town council before it comes to us, is that correct?
I think it gets reviewed and drafted by the ledge council. And sometimes, some, sometimes town council, sometimes.
By, 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 by council, by one stripe or another.
Right, yes. And, and just, I, I felt like we asked these questions last year and got different answers, that's
Yeah.
That's all I could say about us.
I think you're right.
Here last year.
Yeah.
And if I was, I would have forgotten.
But, yeah.
I was, and I did forget.
Yeah, it seems like a new procedure to me. I thought the town clerk ratifying it was what we needed to do and then send it off.
Because legislature asked us for a seal, sealed copy from the clerk, so.
Alright, okay.
I, I, I can't see downside for us to ratify, can you?
No.
Well, it just makes us responsible for consequences.
Okay.
Move to ratify the twenty-twenty-one ATM Article thirty-one Home Rule Legislation and Bylaw Amendment Regulation of Fossil Fuel Infrastructure.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to ratify the twenty-twenty Annual Town Meeting Article fifty, authorize special legislation, additional liquor licenses.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to ratify the twenty-twenty Annual Town Meeting Article fifteen, authorize special legislation, senior means tested property tax exemption.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now, the long list of committee, committee nominations, and thank you to everybody who was volunteering to serve on these committees.
So Corey Atkins of Five Concord Green to the PEG Access Advisory Committee for a term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Sarah Grimwood of Five Twenty Lexington Road to the Natural Resources Commission, representative to the Community Preservation Committee for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Charles Phillips of sixty-five Fairhaven Road to serve as the Housing Authority Representative to the Community Preservation Committee for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Burton Flynn of sixteen forty-three Main Street to serve as the Planning Board Representative to the Community Preservation Committee for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Paul Baum of eleven Ridgewood Road to serve as the Recreation Commission Representative to Community Preservation Committee for the term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Grace Shimoney of ten Dana Road to the Agricultural Commission Committee as an associate member for the term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Alexa Anderson of fourteen Park Lane to serve as the School Committee Representative to the Middle School Building Committee for a term to expire at the completion of the project. And Heather Bowe of thirty-three Alder Road to the Middle School Building Committee for a term to expire January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. And now to the appointments. Bradley Hubbard Nelson of twenty-two twenty-one Neshotik Road to the Comprehensive Sustainability and Energy Committee for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Sarah Pasell of seventeen twelve Monument Street to the Library Committee for a term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Mary Rand Van der Wolden of fifteen, one fifty-eight Simon Willard Road to this Library Committee to serve as an associate member for a term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Linda?
Can I just go back to the committee nominations for a second?
Sure.
I see Heather Bowe is listed here for the Middle School Building Committee for a term to expire January thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Yes.
I understand the committee's needs for communications person and retaining your expertise. But I thought there was some question about, the school committee has used all of their positions
Yes.
in terms of appointments.
Right.
So this would be
So here
the board relinquishing their spot for her to fill. And so I just want to make sure that we're all aware that's what we're doing.
Well, so
Well, in fact, it's actually a shuffle, it was more of a shuffle than that. So
Okay.
So today, as it stands, Don Guriello, who is the co-chair, is is, you know, we have various callouts of different types of members.
Right.
She is serving currently in the capacity of a member with a school-aged child. What we propose to do in the interim is that there is a person, a construction industry personnel slot, which we ideally would want to have with someone who is a, you know, a contractor, can, you know, an engineer, you know, civil engineer type. But actually, technically, because there is not really a callout for an architect, that because Dawn, you know, her profession is architecture specifically of public school buildings, she has a lot of construction oversight experience. So really, from the perspective of the, the charge, I think could be typified as, as that representative, which would then, for Heather, give her the slot that would remain for a community member with school-aged children. Because indeed, she does.
Yeah.
So for the near term, now, I, I, and that's the other thing, is that we assume that through the town vote is the most critical time to have this communications expertise. And that during the construction phase is the most critical time to have a civil engineer onboard. And we have not been able to fill so far. We've, we've approached over candidates, we have not been able to fill that position.
Right.
So we're really, and it's only a five-month term. So the idea is, this is an interim period, five months, we'll give it, you know, time to, first of all, keep the, the project momentum going from a communications perspective, but a very short, you know, term, term end date, which has been discussed with Heather and she's, she's on board with, to make room for a, a dedicated construction industry person, you know, professional.
And let me just add one thing to that, which is that Matt has really been trying, as have others, to recruit someone with construction experience for many months.
I think, I, I just wanted to comment about that. There was this, there was, it was very deliberate to put a construction person in there.
I understand.
And what happened, I, is that once the committee made the decision to do, not to do.
Design bid build.
Design bid build rather than construction manager risk. All of the people who had construction background had not been in favor of design bid build. So once that decision was made, the interest was not there on the part, or the people that we had contacted.
Right.
Which is an exhaustive, obviously, but there was, you know, a reason for that specific skill set to be included.
And we still need it.
And we still need it, and we still hope to recruit it.
Right. So if you're listening and you have construction experience, please contact us.
So, if I could just pursue that just a little bit further. So if I understood you correctly, Matt, Heather's expectation now is that she would step down after January.
That's right.
And so how is the communication need going to be met going forward? Because.
Oh, it's not like it's going away, no. Well, and, you know, there is, you know, there, the, on the town side of the membership, you know, we also have recently lost Kate Hanlon, right? And so she will be replaced. So we, we are trying to constitute a communications subcommittee, you know, with multiple members, so that there will be some continuity when Heather steps down. And there's also the possibility that some other member may choose to step down in the interim, you know. So we, we don't know where we'll land by then. We're just trying to make the best of the current circumstances.
So I appreciate all this, and I, I know she's been a valuable asset to that, and that's important to have that continuity.
Yes.
So I, but I do think that we all need to just be aware of what's transpiring there, so.
Oh, of course. I mean, I, you know, absolutely. And this was kind of the best we could work out.
Right, we tried a number of ways to finagle it. This was the best.
I mean, I, you know, my, my hope had been that the school committee would, you know, just leave Heather in place, because she was already appointed for the term of the project, but they chose not to do that, so.
Okay. So, now I am confused. So the school committee, who is the school?
Alexa Anderson, yeah, so she's a school committee member.
The other school committee member is Court Booth.
Right, so Court is remaining and Alexa's joining.
She's.
And then that, that eliminates Heather's slot.
They felt it was really important to have current members of the school committee on.
Yeah, 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 I get it.
Okay. Alright, we are now on committee appointments from the town manager. I don't think we have any today. And now we are on committee liaison reports, and we didn't do them last week, so we're going to do them now.
Uh-oh. I didn't do, I had nothing this week, but I did have, oh dear, I'm sorry, I don't have my notes from.
You can bring it next time, if you want.
But I did want to say, I went to an MMA session on the future of meetings, and they talked about, they talked about Zoom and about a couple other technologies. But the one person present was from the town of Franklin, who happened to just mention in the context of something else, it's a, it's a, not a whole lot different from our population, but they have seventeen committees and boards.
Oh my God.
And I thought that the contrast was quite striking.
Wow.
I'd love to see that list.
Well, you just go on the town website, and it does most of the regulatory stuff.
Let's invite them to our focus meeting. Have them tell us what to do here. Oh, boy. We've added four or five committees here already. Okay. Who would like to go next for liaison reports?
I have a few.
Alright, Henry?
The brief, I, the ag committee, focused their meeting aside from the plenty of worms that they're encountering, is they're getting, they're making preparations for Ag Day, which we discussed earlier, and that was the bulk of the meeting, talking about that. And we're going to have the next meeting the day before the Ag Day to make the final preparations. Sounds like all the arrangements with the town in terms of the banner and the police coverage and all of that has been taken care of. And I think they're soliciting people to be exhibitors and participants and to take booths at the event.
And that's September eleventh, right?
September eleventh, yeah.
And, and if, if someone wants to have a booth, who do they contact?
They should probably contact the, they can contact me, why don't I?
Alright.
Okay, and I'll pass that along.
Okay.
Because I'm easy to find.
Okay.
And I went to the Board of Registars meeting. You may or may not be aware that they are going through the redistricting process to, they are required by law to rearrange our precincts for, and there's a deadline, which is coming up fairly soon. And it has absolutely no impact on any electoral events, because there are no, no positions, elected positions, where people are elected by precinct. However, what they're concerned about is having the, having them structured so that it, to provide the most convenience for voters.
Yes, great.
And if, to the extent possible, for people to be able to vote near where they live. There's one other issue that they are waiting to hear about, and that is that apparently, there's some legislation pending about the congressional redistricting. And if the, in, in the unlikely event that the town is divided between more than one congressional district, they want to make sure that the precincts line up with the congressional district lines. Otherwise, you'll have people.
Right, yeah.
One precinct in two congressional districts, which will make it difficult. And we will be hearing from them, because we need, we need to approve what they have come up with. And they have, some, they have a geographer who is actually helping them with a topology to put together the district. It's kind of interesting with the, the different colors and trying to have equal population and have them being able to vote in convenient places.
Yep.
And also take into account the fact that with increasing, assuming the state passes or continues a legislation to allow mail-in, mail-in voting, the number of people that need to be served may be significantly, significantly reduced so that some of the polling places can be combined. So that's.
Henry, what's the timetable on that?
Something is, I forget exactly what it is, but there's, we're talking about, I think they have to do the bulk of their work before the end of September.
Oh, so they'll be coming to the select board in the next two months?
Probably late in September, early October.
Okay.
So I just want, want to clarify. So will they have information about possible redistricting within the town in order, you know, to include? I mean, yeah.
I think they're sweating that one out.
Yeah. And is the basis for population distribution, is that the basis for, for the local redistricting?
They're supposed to be roughly essentially equal population.
Okay.
Even though, actually, as I say, has absolutely no consequence for the town, because there are no representatives that are elected by precinct.
Right.
And finally, I went to the Board of Health, and there may, they elected a new chair, who was Joe Block, who was, who was formerly one of the top executives at the open table. And she, she replaced Deborah Green as the chair of the committee. And the major discussion there was the White Pond and the remedies for the algae bloom and so on.
Okay, thank you. Linda?
Okay. So I didn't bring the ones from the week before, but I brought the ones from this week. I had five this week. Two from, two meetings for the trustees of town donations. They've been in a process of having the archivist and an intern for the town records, source, the original source documents for the donations to town donations. The other major thing there is if they were sent out, or requests for proposals for new investment management firms for their portfolio, and they have selected more than Stanley. And that's the highlights there. Our district's commission dealt with a number of routine, fairly routine applications in terms of public hearings. There was one preliminary discussion for six fifteen Lowell Road, which is at the corner of Lowell and Barrett Snow Road, prior to the application, well, technically prior to the application being filed. And there was quite cadre of neighbors who were objecting to the size and nature of the proposed building for that site, given the historic nature of that corner. So we'll hear, I think, a fair amount more about that going forward. I attended the cemetery committee, they elected a new chair, whose name is Leo Carroll, after Paul Cook had been there for a number of years in the role of chair. They are requesting that the community bikers to please bicycle only on paved surfaces. And they're going to be doing some tracking of for baseline, as well as doing some monitoring to see if new signage is in any way going to help with enforcement. And that continues to be a big concern for them there in terms of where the bikes are going. And the main topic really had to do with overall stewardship for the general landscape of the cemetery. And the committee is actually going to do a site visit coming up to assess and suggest prioritization of projects. So there was a lot of discussion about that. And then I attended the Comfort Housing Authority, and they were interested that the select board was going to be considering a DEI commission. At that point, it was just a consideration, so that was presented to them. And they are likely to do a CPC application for their COMAB project. And the porches on Everett Gardens are in, are structurally fading and, and falling apart, actually. And so they are going to be seeking funding for that. And I think that's the highlights there. The other, one other thing I will just mention there is that there were a number of delinquent rental payments and a program, the share program is helping recoup some of the lost revenue from people who lost their jobs and are living in public housing.
The which program?
Shira.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's highlights there.
Thank you.
I've probably mentioned this once before, but the Comprehensive Sustainability and Energy Committee is going to have a Sustainable Home and Energy Event at Harvey Wheeler on September thirteenth. So that's something to look forward to. I also attended the Trails Committee, which discussed a unauthorized bike trail that had been built in the woods near Powder Mill Road off of the Bruce Freeman Trail. And that's being remediated by the person that built it. And in fact, they're going to create a hiking trail out of part of it. And then the Trails Committee more broadly will identify, start a project to identify trails suitable for bikes. Their, their sense is that there won't be many. But there's, you know, certainly a lot to discuss around that. And they do, though, on the other hand, hope that, working across some town departments, they could find some municipal land, and they assume it would be non-conservation land, where a mountain bike, dedicated mountain bike trail could be built. Because actually, mountain bike trails have this certain, you know, jumps and twists and turns that don't really, you know, some of them don't, don't fit with the, you know, current structure of trails. And they do see it as a need that, that should be met in town. The Recreation Committee Commission, in addition to the discussion I had mentioned earlier, adopted their amended administrative code, and they've formed a subcommittee to draft their strategic plan. And then I attended the Middle School Building Committee, which we discussed a little bit earlier tonight, where they restaffed the subcommittees. So we now have some new standing subcommittees, which will be meeting over the next couple of months for finance, for design, and for communications. And then we got into some of the more details about the schematic design, particularly focused on windows, but also materials. And there are some additional cost savings updates that have been made to the design. So the budget currently stands at one hundred point two to one hundred point five is the range at the moment.
That's narrow, wow.
It's narrow, and it's, it's very close, but not quite at our one hundred million dollar goal. But very, very close. So that's it.
Alright, thank you. And just really briefly, before I forget, on the Recreation Commission.
Yeah.
That administrative code has to be adopted by the select board, so it is going to be on the agenda next week. Okay, Linda?
I was just going to come and follow up to Matt's comment. You know, the, the interesting thing on the middle school agendas now are cost savings. Where are we on budget? You know, they're clearly putting this front and center on the agenda, so.
Good, yeah. Alright, I had a few brief ones.
Oh, and there was a Sustainability Subcommittee, I missed the fourth one, sorry.
Okay. But who is on that? Because we don't have a sustainability.
Director, no, but there were. Director, no, but there were, there's a sustainability professional, uh, Matt Root, who's uh on, on the committee.
Oh, good, okay, all right, um.
Not that he's the only person that has an opinion there, but yeah.
Okay, so just very briefly, I attended a school committee meeting. All children will be full time in school. In person this year. The biggest question is masks. Uh, the school committee had a very good discussion about their goals for the year. They voted to adopt the capital planning task force recommendations and the dates that are in our calendar. And they approved the Concord Teachers Association three-year contract. The Finance Committee uh worked on sustained growth rate. And they have now put out their letters uh for the guidelines. And they're starting to learn about ARPA. Which is a new um funding that we're going to get from COVID and from infrastructure. And we'll be hearing more about that here as well. In the next few meetings. Uh, the Transportation Advisory Committee. Is doing a comprehensive townwide speed study. Um, hiring a consultant once we get funded. So as you recall, the select board maybe. A year and a half ago, two years ago, voted a townwide twenty-five mile an hour speed limit.
Mm-hmm.
But there are other speed limits and the question is what supersedes what?
Yeah.
So it's pretty complicated and um. The suggestion was made by Steve Duke, the town engineer, that we do a comprehensive speed study throughout town. Hiring a consultant, once we can get funding for that.
Is that something, that sounds like a big project that's only done periodically. You haven't done it in a long time, it's.
Nineteen fifty's?
Yeah, it's a long time.
Every half a century, whether you need it or not.
Right, so a lot of the speed limits in town are a little bit out of date from the nineteen fifty's.
One of the things, sorry, Terry, I guess, just because Susan asked the question about it, one of the things that was a big part of conversation though was. Looking at a methodology that is, you know, looking at the methodology too. So it's not just a standard eighty-fifth percentile, looking at. The place for pedestrians and cyclists and other modes, and that was, that was a big part of the conversation.
Good.
Yeah, yeah.
Complete streets is the town policy.
Right, but the state law is out of date. It's pretty complicated. You know, listening to this meeting tonight, there are a lot of transportation issues that we have to do. So we will. Pretty soon be doing that focus meeting on transportation, um, maybe October or something. Uh, the bike subcommittee of the uh Transportation Advisory Committee has been expanded to five. And so we are looking for people to apply for that. Um, and we did get a shared streets grant of ninety-two thousand dollars for Old Marlboro Road. At the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail intersection and Williams Road. So um, that's it for my liaison report. Uh, next we have Miss Laziness Correspondence. We have one letter from Deborah Stark, one from Leslie Fisher, one from Mark Galis, and one from Tanya Galis. Thank you for submitting those letters. And we will go now to public comment. Anybody live have a public comment? No, anybody on Zoom? Okay, we've talked long enough and everybody's turned off their Zoom, so um I think that's it then.
Move to your.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, thank you for a great meeting. Again, we'll see.